Friday. Thank you to over 5,000 students who have 97% or higher attendance. Mrs. Woods sent out some congratulatory messages to our students last week identifying those students who are doing exemplary attendance. Thank you to Mr. Meckus and the Warren Gold Brigade Band and Color Guard for an outstanding season. Thank you to our students and staff who helped produce Cinderella. It was an amazing play. Thank you to all of our families, staff, and students who participated in the community dinner conversation last Wednesday. Amazing turnout and participation. Our Thanksgiving outreach is next week. Looking forward to that, so thank you in advance. We have our small business in Warren, PTSA, coming up on November 30th. Board, I'd like to invite up Mr. Russell to introduce our Ed Elements team. We had great conversation tonight around school board goals, and our Ed Elements team is here tonight to talk a little, they were going to talk to us a little bit about our strategic goals. We're not going to be able to do that, but I do want you to meet the team and just put a name with a face.
Thank you, Dr. Hanson, President Triplett, members of the board. I want to introduce the team. You guys don't get out on this either, so Houston and Brian, you guys get to come up here as well. But at this time, I would like to introduce Dreah Getches to come up and introduce her team formally and just say a few words.
Hi, everyone in the Warren community. We are from an organization called Education Elements. We've been actually partnering with Warren since about 2015. It's been a really long time that you all have been welcoming us into your community to support you with a lot of different initiatives. Right now, we're working on bringing your strategic plan home, helping you all really make sure that the community is at the center of the goals that you all are creating. Really, the woman behind the magic is Houston over here, your project lead who works day in and day out trying to make sure that we're summarizing the feedback that you all have provided and making sure that those are reflected in your goals. Brian and I are, in the background, supporting you as well. We have over five years of experience just working in the state of Indiana and are just so grateful that you all were our first and really proud of the work that we continue to do.
Before we go on to our school showcase in Stony Brook, you can start making your way up. I just wanted to make a quick announcement since we do have a full house right now. On December the 31st, we will be having our holiday event, and we will also have a blood drive during that time. I spoke to the people at the blood bank, and in these winter months, blood donations are low, but people are still in need. So please consider, and it's also a Bleed Blue that the Colts will be doing at Lucas Oil, that if you're able to, please donate blood. I just wanted to make that real quick announcement. December the 21st, we will have the blood bus here at Warren again to be able to, our goal is to at least have 20 people that day. If we exceed that, great, but we at least want to meet our goal of having 20 volunteers that can donate blood. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
That whole event is on the 21st?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So we all have a full holiday event that will be coming out to you all in a newsletter and with a link for families to sign up, as well as if you're in need of Thanksgiving baskets for Thanksgiving at Morehead Community Resource Center. On the 27th, Wednesday, we will be doing food baskets. All righty, Stony Brook, sorry for taking up your space.
Oh. All right. President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, thank you for providing us an opportunity tonight. I am Chad Reedy. I'm the proud principal of Stony Brook. This is my fourth year in this role, and so for my eighth graders, they have, this is our fourth year together, so I've seen them from fifth to eighth. And tonight, Ms. Napper is our orchestra teacher, and so we are the home of the Red Storm. This is our Red Storm drumming group. And so, Ms. Napper, do you want to speak briefly on how we have a group of drummers in an orchestra program and percussion?
Sure. Can I just walk from here?
You can talk from there, yeah.
So, hi. I have been here for 11 years, and my first year, I was hired in by Ms. Griffin, and she said, "I really want your drumming program." So 11 years ago, we started the program at Stony Brook. It was started as an after-school program. It is now-
A period during the school day. It is seventh and eighth graders in the program. They can take it both years if they want, so I have a few that return every year that were seventh graders and now eighth graders, and it helps us build our program much faster, and the things they're playing now are way beyond what we played a couple of years ago. So it really draws a group of students that are not necessarily in the music classes. I teach it traditionally. They never learn how to read music in my class. We do all the musical things, but we don't read music. This drumming is from mostly Ghana and the Caribbean that I teach. We're going to play two pieces for you today. The first one is called Pon Logo, which is what these drums are called. It is by Bernard Woma, who has passed away, but it is a piece from Accra, Ghana. And the second piece we're going to do is called The Island of Bekwe, which is a little tiny island in the Grenadines, and it's got a lot of Jamaican reggae feel to it because of where it's located. So we're going to do a little bit, you're going to hear some of the elements of music that we get to do, even though we don't read it on a piece of paper. So, you guys ready? Let's do it.
Red Storm Drummers, everyone. They had unlimited pizza after school, so they are not hungry, but I know how teenagers eat, so. All right. So that's just one of the many things I'm going to talk about today. I'm going to start with kind of what has become our school motto, and we were saying the pledge, some kids were continuing with this because every day I get on and I have a routine, and they hear this every day, but at the end, I always say, it's my catchphrase, "If it doesn't challenge you, then it doesn't change you." And so, this is something we drive home with growth mindset in our town hall meetings first day, kids hear that you may not be good at math now, but that doesn't mean you were born not good at math, right? So just that whole growth mindset mentality, but they hear that every day and every morning. So I am fortunate, I have an amazing team of people that I work with. I'm going to go through some, talk about, highlight some of the people and what they do, because without them, you know, it's, a lot of the great things would not be happening. So we are kind of designed like a cohort, and so I'm going to talk about that a little too. So we have an assistant principal and a counselor at each grade level. So our fifth grade cohort is Robin Schwellmeyer and Caroline Kriegel, so they are the fifth grade cohort. Sixth grade cohort, and many are here tonight. Bianca Rivers and Lisa Spearman make up that team. Becky True is the associate principal, and Erin Gobby, the counselor, make up our seventh grade team. And our, new to us this year, Deshaun Greis and Tania Anderson make up our eighth grade cohort. And so essentially, they function as a school within a school, right? We are a large school with a lot of kids, and they are tasked with creating systems and structures that allow kids to perform and teachers to teach, and that's no small job when you have 280 kids in some cases. And so, we recently, this is year three of, we used to travel with the kids, and there are benefits to traveling with a set of kids, but we're finding there are a lot more benefits for staying anchored in a grade level. One of those is, you know, a fifth grader is much different than an eighth grader. And so, if I get really good at learning what makes a fifth grader tick and the strategies for, interventions for that, I can really iterate and enhance that. If I move to another grade level, that's a different kid a year from now. There's a lot of change that happens, and so we're really to be consistent with that. They're able to build rapport with a group of teachers instead of changing every year, so that just builds trust and rapport. And one of the main drivers was that those guaranteed experiences that we're trying to align for each grade level. And so, you can become an expert at BizTown or JobSparks when you stay in that grade level rather than trying to relearn a guaranteed experience every year. So they're an amazing group. They do a great job every day. It's fun to watch all the, when I say iterate, how do I recognize kids in what way? What strategies can we do that way? And so, just an amazing team to work with. My family engagement liaison, Jasmine Perez, that's her office. I don't know how she fits all that in there, but she is constantly going out to the community and getting donations. We just had an honor roll celebration. Every kid got like a free dinner somewhere or a coupon. She's very good at that. She's very good at connecting our families to the Community Resource Center and removing a lot of barriers for attendance. As administrators, we can't always leave the building and go out and see why hasn't this student shown up for three days, four days? And she will go and do a home visit and reestablish contact with the family. It's, nine times out of 10, it's a transportation issue, and we're able to reconnect that family and that student. I also am very fortunate to have two City Connect coordinators. That's unique to Stony Brook, having two of them, but these are grant positions that we started a couple of years ago. Jory Jackson and Keitha Patterson, I know they're here tonight as well. But it's such a, it's a research process, right? So they will go in and do individual and whole class reviews. They'll interview every student. They'll find out interests, and that's what they spent a good portion of the beginning of this school year. And then they will turn around and go look for community partnerships to help create positive experiences for kids. They're also very good, also another layer of removing barriers for attendance and forming attendance groups with students and letting them know that, hey, we missed you. You weren't here. You know, you matter. What was exciting tonight, if you were in our cafeteria right after school, we had all our new clubs. So they've already got our clubs running as of tonight, so when they talk to kids and they find out their interest and then go and find sponsors in the building, out of the building, but we have seven new clubs starting tonight, anywhere from dance club to photography to gardening to hair. Hair was very popular. And so, just, I love seeing a cafeteria full of kids after school, and they're connected to school and they're excited to be there, and they aren't going to miss the day they have club, for sure, right? So we are really excited. I will also plug that this is the end of that grant year for them, and that's, we hope to continue their funding through Warren as a part of this, but they are an asset to our building. So when you put all those things together, you look for impact, right? And so, one way that can be measured, you know, last year, we started to see an uptick in our attendance. We started some of these systems, and this year, we hit the ground running with them. And so, we went from 92.9 last year to right now, holding at 95.6. And so, we're not quite there to 97, but look out, we're going to get there, right? And so, that's the impact those systems and people are having on getting kids to school this year. So we wanted to start the year with bringing our community into the building. You guys recognize anybody from that slide? See anybody with that pink cowboy hat? Anybody? Yeah, yeah. So I know President Triplett brought her goats over, and we had those in the front of Stony Brook, and the kids loved them. Those are future Red Storm kids there, a little little for us, but lots of families came in, kids got to interact with them. Julie French has been a big part of our PTA for a long time, and we have always appreciated that support and anchoring us there. A big night, one of our biggest nights, and this is kind of the work of the City Connects coordinators in our family engagement liaison, is every spring, we have a summer camp night. And so, you know, keeping students engaged in the summer is hard, and so they created this space and this night where all these organizations come in under one roof, and parents get to come in and do a one-stop shop, go around, talk to people, sign up on the spot. It is an amazing event, and it's getting larger every year, so we look to continue that tradition this year. We also already this year have brought the community in a lot of different ways. We've had our family literacy night where we had costumes, and every kid left with a free book. We had our talent show. We have, always have concerts and sporting events, and we have a very active all-pro dads' club that meets once a month and invites them in for breakfast and some great discussion with their kids. So we're post-COVID, trying to build back all those positive experiences that kind of went away for a while, but I feel like we are on our way with that. We also spend a lot of time celebrating our students when they are successful. So we will, during our town hall meetings where we bring all the kids in, we will celebrate our administrators and counselors, celebrate students, honor roll and attendance. Our kids know that if you make honor roll, you get a trip, right? And they love it. And so this quarter, they went to Roller Cave, which is one of our partners. They'll go bowling. We pay for that trip. There's no barrier. They get to go during the school day briefly, but it's enough time. They come back excited. We also do quarterly PBIS celebrations where we recognize positive behaviors. Through our core carnival, we have some pretty intense staff versus student competitions that are lots of fun, and field day. So we want to make sure our students are recognized when they are achieving. So those are a lot of the social aspects of Stony Brook. We have not lost sight on the need to prepare our students for the rigor that awaits them every spring with ILEARN. So we know that that rigor is increasing on ILEARN, and what they're asked to do is incredible, and so we have to make sure we prepare them for that. And so, we've spent a lot of time with our teachers with lesson planning, making sure all the elements are there to create and deliver that effective lesson. Along with that, when we're doing that, we look at DOK levels. Is this question rigorous enough? Are we asking them to write in a way that they are going to write in the spring? So we look at that intentionally. We've increased our interventions, especially with our iRead students who have not passed. They received tutoring twice a week, that started at the beginning of the school year. And then even on top of our PD, we provide additional professional development opportunities with our district instructional coaches where a math and language arts teachers meet and look at those standards and make sure, do I have enough, you know, DOK strength in this lesson to meet their needs? So we have not lost sight of that, and we are working on that every day as well. So we also look for an impact and measurable things when you, your focus is on building connections and keeping students engaged with rigor in the classroom. And so, I think a really good indicator, and it's very palpable in our building right now, is the year-to-date, last year, we had 601 referrals, and the time I ran this report last week, we were at 401. So that's a 33 reduction in referrals, and a referral causes a disruption to the learning environment, right? So there's 33% less interruptions to our learning. And so, a lot of those things that are being done at Stony Brook are starting to yield dividends, and we're seeing that. You saw tonight a glimpse of our music program. That is a very, that is part of our identity. We have very strong music programs. We like to be a feeder for the high school and believe we are. Right now, we have over 230 students that receive at least three years of music instruction. You add the 5-6, and our 5-6 music teacher is amazing as well. Our students, and you see a lot of experiences outside of the band room and choir room. They take them out in the community. They let them see what it looks like to be a musician and that there is a path for them. And we have, you know, some kids, sports is the answer, right? That's what draws me to school. That's what connects me to school. We run the gamut of that, and so we have all the offerings traditional schools have with our athletics. We have some amazing coaches. We like to do a lot of our coaches in-house with teachers, which also is another layer of connections. And so, I would like to end with this slide that kind of encapsulates kind of what our focus is, right? And that is, no significant learning can occur without a significant relationship. So we have been intentional with forming those with our students, with our community, with our teachers, and we look to continue to grow and develop those going forward. So thank you for letting me talk about Stony Brook tonight.
I just want to say, I really like what you're, I really like what you're doing there. You're involving the students in all kinds of extracurricular activities along with the academics, and so that's what makes school exciting. You know, we tell kids all the time, you know, if learning is fun, then they're going to engage more. So I think that you're really incorporating that, and I thank you for that, because you made me excited.
Thank you for allowing your staff to think outside the box, to create those innovative opportunities. And for our awesome social workers, they reach out, they call me like, "I'm calling for a community partner. I'm not calling for a school board." So, you know, and I love what they're doing and reaching out to the community, trying to find the resources, because funding is hard. We all know we're looking for funding, but someone said today, "If we keep letting cost lead, we will never get ahead." So let's keep looking for those ways, and thank you for relentlessly pursuing those opportunities for our babies to want to come to school. So thank you.
I too would also like to say, I'm very happy seeing a lot of these changes that have happened to Stony Brook. I myself am a Stony Brook intermediate and middle school alum, and for me to see how you guys have changed a lot of the things around there and a lot of new incentives to push students to do better or to also better themselves, not only in the school, not only in the school way, but also outside of school. It really warms my heart to see that, and you guys are doing a really good job, and I'm really happy to see this. Thank you.
And I just want to add, I love that drum group. They were awesome. I mean, totally awesome. And the instructor, you know, you can tell she put a lot into what she's doing with those students, and they had a lot of pride when they were playing those drums, so good work, yes.
You're at the hot seat.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would segue back to our, she's so poised and professional, our student representative, Ms. Brown.
Good evening, President Triplett, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Since our last meeting in October, there's been a few updates to some of our extracurriculars and a little bit around the school. At the last meeting, first, I would like to let myself be known. I had one of our student council publication, public relation officers come to give the report on the school as I was off hosting our National Honor Society induction ceremony. And I can proudly say that I'm very happy to have, first off, inducted and also to have welcomed our 24-25 chapter of National Honor Society. Dr. Hanson touched on this a little bit briefly. Our Warren Sings event where we had some of our middle school choirs come to sing with our high school choirs, it was a great event. I believe we had a full house, actually, and the audience was really great. We're actually looking to host something similar, but with the elementary school come December for our winter concert. Last week, the high school put on our fall musical production of Cinderella. Again, I believe we had a full house, and it was really fun. I loved seeing it. It was great. It went well. We had an amazing audience. We also brought back our blood drive for our school. I myself was very happy to see some of our community involvement. I even got to see Dr. Hanson there, and it was a very interesting experience, as I am a first-time donor. Also that Saturday, we- But someone said today, if we keep letting cost lead, we will never get ahead. So, let's keep looking for those ways. And thank you for relentlessly pursuing those opportunities for our babies to want to come to school. So, thank you.
I too would also like to say, I'm very happy seeing a lot of these changes that have happened to Stony Brook. I myself am a Stony Brook intermediate and middle school alum. And for me to see how you guys have changed a lot of the things around there and a lot of new incentives to push students to do better or to also better themselves, not only in the school, not only in the school way, but also outside of school. It really warms my heart to see that. And you guys are doing a really good job and I'm really happy to see this. Thank you.
And I just want to add, I love that drum group. They were awesome. I mean, totally awesome. And the instructor, you know, you can tell she put a lot into what she's doing with those students. And they had a lot of pride when they were playing those drums. So, good work, yes.
I would segue back to our, she's so poised and professional, our student representative, Ms. Brown.
Good evening, President Triplet, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Since our last meeting in October, there's been a few updates to some of our extracurriculars and a little bit around the school. At the last meeting first, I would like to let myself be known. I had one of our student council publication, public relation officers come to give the report on the school as I was off hosting our National Honor Society induction ceremony. And I can proudly say that I'm very happy to have, first off, inducted and also to have welcomed our 24-25 chapter of National Honor Society. Dr. Hanson touched on this a little bit briefly. Our Warren sings event where we had some of our middle school choirs come to sing with our high school choirs. It was a great event. I believe we had a full house actually and the audience was really great. We're actually looking to host something similar, but with the elementary school come December for our winter concert. Last week, the high school put on our fall musical production of Cinderella. Again, I believe we had a full house and was, it was really fun. I loved seeing it. It was great. It went well. We had an amazing audience. We also brought back our blood drive for our school. I myself was very happy to see some of our community involvement. I even got to see Dr. Hanson there. And it was a very interesting experience as I am a first-time donor. Also, that Saturday, we had our Warren Central speech team do their first meet of the season. And one of their members came in sixth place on the team for broadcasting. Currently, Student Council is running our annual Huddle Up Against Hunger fundraiser. And this year's theme is Green for Good. We are hoping to raise $1,000. And we hope to have the advisory period classes compete against one another for the prize of a holiday movie party. National Honor Society this year, I don't believe I have, I believe I might have actually touched on this a little bit earlier. They have taken over children's Christmas party. So, they are currently in the process of planning that. That is to be hosted December 13th at Warren Central. And that is currently all I have as far as our school updates go. I hope at the next meeting that we can go over how the Christmas party went, our outcome for Huddle Up Against Hunger and also some of the results for our blood drive because I'm hoping that we did reach our 400-person donation. Thank you.
Hey, Janice, at what date did you say the Christmas party would be?
Our Christmas party is December 13th. I believe that's a Friday.
Amazing. Thank you for those updates. Next on our agenda, we will have our mayor neighborhood advocate, Ms. Jenny.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I want to say as a Pike Township alum, the more that I see and learn about Warren Township, I am continually impressed by the things that you guys are doing. I didn't know much about Warren when I was at Pike. But coming to these meetings, the more I learn, the more impressed I am by everything that you guys have going on and the diversity of the student population, but also the range of things that you guys participate in. So, just wanted to start off with that. My name is Jenny Manalis. I am the Mayor's Neighborhood Advocate. If you're unfamiliar with who I am or what that means, I essentially play the role of a liaison between the city and county agencies and the community, specifically for the Far East side. And so, at these meetings, I usually provide just some updates about things that are happening and things to be aware of. One of them is leaf season, which is currently going on until December 6. And what that means is that DPW will pick up up to 40 bags of leaves that you have to dispose of them for you. They just ask that you put those bags in plastic bags and not paper as with the elements, the paper will make more problems than they want to handle. And so, put them in plastic bags. And like I said, you can do up to 40 bags. And that is going to go on until December 6. And as of next week, trash and leaf pickup will be on a sliding schedule for the Thanksgiving holidays. And as a reminder, they also want to remind the public that burning leaf is illegal. If you were not aware, you could be fined up to $2,500 for burning your leaf. So, that's just something to keep in mind as you're finding ways to get rid of your leaves. Another thing I wanted to bring to attention is there's an organization called Faith in Place. And they are giving up to $30,000 to house of worship and nonprofit organizations to plant and maintain trees on their properties. And so, if you are a house of worship or you are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, you can apply for that. And some of the things that they will pay for is not just the trees, but also supplies such as watering buckets, planting supplies, site preparations, personal costs for planting and maintenance and signage. And they do have a list of other things that are eligible for this. And if you would like to know more information, you can go to B I T dot L Y backslash community dash canopy. B I T dot L Y backslash community dash canopy. If you know of any house of worship or nonprofit organizations that are wanting to have more greenery around them, like I said, they're giving up to $30,000. And that application, the last day to submit one is tomorrow, November 21st. IMPD is having Coffee with a Cop December 4th at Pana Donuts from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at 10745 East Washington Street. And if you're not familiar with what Coffee with a Cop is, it's an opportunity for the general public to interact with our police department in a more informal way where you can ask questions, you can just have a conversation, get some free doughnut, well, actually, I don't know if the donuts are free. So, I'll take that back. I'll take that far back. But you can enjoy donuts and coffee. It might be out of your pockets, it might be out of theirs. I don't remember. I'm so sorry. But that is happening December 4th. And then, back to DPW, tonight, we are expected to get our first winter temperatures, weather things. And so, as a reminder, they will be having snowplow trucks out starting tonight at 11:00 p.m. And then tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m., more are going to be on the road. So, we'll have about a dozen drivers tonight and then additional crews tomorrow. We are expected between two to three inches of snow. And since this is going to be the first major event of the season, just a reminder, if you see snowplows, please get out of their way. Let them do their jobs so you don't damage your car, you don't slow them up. Move over if you're able to keep a safe distance away from them. So, just general reminders, people, give yourself extra time, people. I feel like every time weather comes, we all kind of got to learn how to drive again. And so, just give people extra time so that accidents and things like that are mitigated to the best of our own capabilities. That is all that I have for you guys. Do we have any questions?
I have a question. When is Post and Raymond going to reopen?
Yeah. I, I can't say that I have an answer for you right now, but I can send an email throughout the rest of this meeting. And if I do get an answer before I leave, I can update you.
Jenny, before you leave, could you please tell them the awesome opportunity that the mayor's office and the Pacers and the other organizations regarding our Haitian Creole families were able to receive, please?
Yeah. This past Saturday, November 16th, MSD of Warren Township at Morehead Community Center was able to host a Thanksgiving giveaway specifically aimed at the Haitian community in, on the Far East side. If you guys are not aware, Pacers has a Haitian-Canadian basketball, basketball player by the name of Benedict Matherin, number double zero. And this was my third year working with them to give out turkeys as well as other foods from Kroger to the Haitian community. And this season of giving and needs, we know that not everyone is able to afford such luxuries that we might not even see as luxuries. And so, we were able to put on an event and MSD of Warren was gracious enough to host us. And we had families coming from all around the city to receive those. And it was just really an incredible opportunity. And Mrs. Shervla and the entire Morehead staff were beyond amazing to work with to accomplish this. And so, you can go on the Pacers Instagram or Facebook page and see a little short video about it and see some pictures. We had boomers and some of the cheerleaders out and the head coaches. So, it was a really great experience and we're hoping to continue to do it. And like I said, Warren was such an amazing host. So, lots of great things in the future.
Thank you for allowing us to have that experience and collaboration. Next on our agenda is Board Correspondence.
We do not have any correspondence.
7.0 is Business of Citizens present, green cards.
We have no green cards.
We will now go to our consent agenda. We will be taking a vote on approval of minutes, financial reports, for payroll claim, claim registries, electronic payments, year-to-date summary of funds, human resources, permission to accept gifts and grants, donors choose and change orders. We have no contracts included in our consent agenda, no special events and no conflict of interest. We will now take a vote.
So moved.
All right, you guys, my disclosure, I am not functioning tonight for hunger. Are there any questions, discussion? I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
It's been properly moved by Rachel and second by Julie that we accept the consent agenda. Time for the vote. It's approved, okay. That motion was approved unanimously. We are having a little bit of technical difficulties, but we will get it. There it is. Next on our agenda, we, is 9.0. We have items that were pulled from the consent agenda for our field trips. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
It has been properly moved by Terry and second by Ms. Julie. Are there any discussions? If not, we are ready to vote. That motion carries. We have one abstain. The next, 9.02, use of school property. I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'm with the motion.
It has been properly moved by Rachel and second by Kevin. Are there any discussions? If not, time for the vote. The motion passed. We have one abstain. Next is our reports. That is item 10.0 on our agenda. 10.01, college and career readiness. We will have Ms. Laura.
Oh, okay. She had closed down. She just closed down. Oh, okay. So, yeah, so you can just, yeah, you can go with that one. But it's not coming out well. They kind of connected. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Is, I don't see my PowerPoint down there. Oh, you're fine. No, that's not me.
That's not you.
I don't see, I don't see my PowerPoint.
Is that you? This one?
That's the Google slide. That's Google's live version.
Is the Google slide version different?
No, it's the same.
Okay. So, that one's fine.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. After a short delay, thank you. Good evening, President Triplet, Dr. Hanson, School Board, Warren Community. I'm Laura Buttgrat. I'm the proud Director of College and Career Readiness for Warren Township. And I'm thrilled to be back in front of you all tonight to talk about the strides that we are making in preparing our students for a successful future. College and career readiness is just one of the ways that we invest in the future of our graduates. And we look for those relevant learning experiences that will empower our students by investing in college and career readiness from kindergarten and continuing throughout their journey to graduation. We want to equip our students with those skills and that knowledge that they need to pursue their post-secondary opportunities, whether that's enrollment in a post-secondary institution, enlisting in the armed services, securing meaningful employment or launching an entrepreneurial venture. I've shown this before in previous, but as we look at the college and career readiness continuum, just as a reminder for our elementary students, we really want to light that spark of career awareness and allow them to discover the diverse and vast number of careers that are available for them in their future. In intermediate and middle school, we transition more into career exploration with deeper knowledge about industries, professions, as well as self-discovery about students' own interests, their skills, their learning styles and how they connect their academics to future careers. High school, we shift to more of a career preparation. And we know with the change in graduation requirements and the focus on work-based learning and employability skills, we're really helping our students gain those practical skills and experiences that will train them and prepare them for real-world challenges. And then as they complete high school and move on to post-secondary, whether that's work, enlistment, employment, that they're going to continue to hone in on the specific skills and knowledge that they need to pursue that chosen path they have after high school. I'm back to our counselors again. Sorry, shameless plug again. So, as school counselors are at the heart of college and career readiness, I want to again acknowledge their accomplishment this fall. All 14 of our MSD Warren Township schools received that highest level, the Gold Star designation of a comprehensive school counseling program. At the Indiana School Counseling Association Conference last week, we were able to recognize all of those students. They received their award and their recognition. And as I've mentioned before, there were 32 schools in the state of Indiana, only 32 schools in the whole state that received that award at the gold level. And Warren was 14 of those. So, pretty So pretty proud of that. So, thank you. They've been amazing. And thank you to Dr. Hanson and Allison Woods for supporting us at that awards celebration. And also I just want to again say how grateful I am on behalf of my role in our school counselors for the board and the district's continued investment in our school counseling program. So very grateful for that. So, okay. It was a great picture, it was a really fun day. So, some of the ways that our school counselors support school counseling in this, I could go on and on, but just some of the highlights. So they're in the classroom doing college and career readiness lessons. We celebrate College and Career Go Week every year. Technically, it's College Go Week, but we make it College and Career Go Week because we want to focus on all options after high school. We do that from the Early Childhood Center through all the buildings. Junior Achievement Experiences, we utilize Zello. Career Discovery Meetings, which are a new addition to the high school experience this year. Individual Academic Planning, College Visits, College and Career Fairs, Applications and Scholarship Opportunities. And those are just some of the ways our school counselors support our college and career readiness programs. I've been up here before to tell you about Zello. I'm not going to rehash all of that, just a couple of highlights. We continue to increase that engagement in utilizing those resources and tools. This year, we have averaged every month of the school year over five thousand individual student logins in Zello every month, and total login since August is over fifty-seven thousand. So students are getting in there and exploring, learning about themselves, learning about careers, completing the different lessons and missions for that. So we're just real excited about how Zello can support our college and career readiness. Couple of things, a little difficult to see, but one of the things I really value in Zello is the opportunity for students to explore all pathways, right? So if you look at this, students can go in and say, well, what does a four-year college look like? But they can also look at military, or I want to go straight to work, or I want to take a gap year, what does that mean? Or entrepreneurship, so they can explore on what they think they may want to do after high school. They can also explore through a specific career, if I want to be an architect, I can go in and specifically search for that career, find that information, find about the education requirement, salary, is it a growing career, all of those things. If they have an interest in a college, let's say they want to look at IU, or they want to look at Xavier, or they want to look at Howard, or Ball State, or Loyola, any of those, they can research the specific colleges and see virtual tours, enrollment, all the different things that are offered there. And then you'll hear high school students sometimes say, well, I think I want to study psychology, or I want to study biology. So they can go in under majors, and if they're interested in psychology, or biology, or mechanics, or that, they can look at the majors and explore different careers that way. So lots of ways that students can connect their interests and what they want to do through Zello. They made one addition, or they updated the Zello Dashboard. Couple of things I'm really excited about, up until this year, it was only in Spanish available for students, but Zello just recently has now included over a hundred and thirty languages for students. So all of our students in the district should be able to, are able to access the lessons, so all of these things where it says, hey Laura, lessons, portfolios, that are all can be changed at the click of a button into their own native language. They've added the social media feed in the middle, and that is also individualized to the student. So the more information I save, the more careers I'm interested in, the more colleges I look at, this feed will change and adapt to my own interest. So that's an exciting thing. And so from here, you can see, they have the matchmaker, which is the career interest, personality, learning styles, they can build portfolios. Later in high school, they can add their experiences to help build a resume. They have lessons that are integrated throughout the year in classes with counselors, as well as every student has a mapped-out Zello assignment on all of our e-learning days, and that's K-12. So, Zello's been a great resource, so I appreciate our investment in that. So, I'm very grateful for two of our great partnerships that we have with Junior Achievement and Employee Indy. So Junior Achievement, they have a wealth of college and career readiness programs, K-12, and they most, almost all of them are free. We love that, we love free stuff. They have classroom kits, they have career days, many of our elementaries take advantage of those career days and career speakers. They provide speakers for our freshman speaker series that we do through the freshman seminar class. Mr. Reedy referenced some of those guaranteed experiences at the middle school level. BizTown, one of my favorite experiences for our fifth graders, where they get to run the town for the day. Finance Park is a financial literacy. It's a digital program, but there's a simulation at the end of that that they take and that all of our seventh grade students enjoy. JobSpark is the eighth grade event where they go to the state fairgrounds and get to experience some hands-on with three of those large rooms full of different employers and that. So Junior Achievement has just been fabulous, and in fact, today, they sponsored, and with the support as well of Employee Indy, an incredible college and career fair this morning at the high school. We had over seventy different businesses, colleges, entrepreneur, military, different groups at the high school, and each of those seventy groups had two or three people with them. And all of our juniors and seniors came down to interact in the fieldhouse. It was just amazing to see. Students were engaged and having conversations and signing up for things and asking questions and that, so it was just a great experience. And Junior Achievement and Employee Indy are a huge part of bringing all those people into our school, so very grateful for that. Employ Indy is, their role is really to help bridge that gap, sorry, hit the button the wrong way. There we go. So they have a whole series of a continuum of programs called Talent Bound. We continue to grow and work with them, we meet with them regularly throughout the year through our different schools. But through Talent Bound, we right now are taking advantage of talent talks, again, providing career speakers, they make those connections. We tell them, hey, we want some people from this career, or graphic artists, or game designers, and they will go out and find the people and bring them into our school based upon the interests that we have. And we're using Zello to get some of that data of who are, who do our students want to see, what type of careers do we want to bring in. Talent Tour is industry tours, where we are able to take students out into the community and visit a business, a facility, and they can see firsthand what the jobs are and what that looks like, and responsibilities in those buildings or in those businesses. And then Talent Prep is a program that helps students develop resumes, we do mock interviews, they will bring in professionals from the community that will sit and talk with our students and practice interview skills with them and give them feedback. So they've just been an incredible resource for us. Quick mention of Twenty First Century Scholars. Through auto-enrollment, we have more than doubled our Twenty First Century Scholar numbers, so our current junior and senior class, you can see there about the three-hundred-and-twenty. Our sophomore class was the first year they auto-enrolled, and we have over seven-hundred sophomores that are Twenty First Century Scholars. And in our freshman class, we have over eight-hundred-and-twelve. So I'm just thrilled to see that scholarship opportunity be available to so many students. We know that it's the equivalent of more than forty thousand dollars for them to pursue college after high school, so really excited about that. This is the Scholar Success Program. So the Scholar Track is a platform with the Commission for Higher Ed that we have all of our freshmen create an account, and it's where we ultimately track scholar, Twenty First Century Scholars, we track our career discovery meetings there. So it really is a platform for students to support them through their four years of high school. Twenty First Century Scholars are required to have a Scholar Track and complete the Scholar Success Program. So there are three things they are expected to do every year. And through the counselors, through the support of the grant, I'm going to talk about here in just a minute, we have College Access Navigator and our IU Advisory Core Advisor that work diligently with all of our scholars to make sure they're aware of the requirements, checking in on their GPA, making sure they're checking off all of those things every year. So just really excited of being able to provide really specific resources for our scholars, because we want all of them to still be eligible when they graduate. So, some big grants. So as part of Richard M. Fairbanks Foundation, they have had the College Matters Initiative. So we have received two grants from them for a total of over one-point-seven million dollars. The first grant started last year and will continue through twenty-twenty-five. That was called, or that is called Meeting the Moment. With that, I'll share some of the things we were able to do. Primarily, we were able to hire Sylvia Phillips, who is that College Access Navigator, to really support and supplement the efforts of our school counselors to provide that more individualized, facilitate meetings, family, education, all of those things. Our steering team for the reversing the trend grant, that is the larger one-point-five-million-dollar grant, is myself, Sylvia, our College Access Navigator, Rachel Schwering, who is our Department Chair of the Counseling Department at the high school, and y'all know me, I'm the proud principal of Warren Central. So you can see some of those things that we're doing as part of that, but I'm just going to highlight a couple. We were able to, transportation, the cost of transportation is frequently one of the barriers for field trips and students and access. So through the grant, we're able to provide payment for warrant transportation, so we can pay for the bus, the bus driver and that, and they have been fantastic. They have been a wonderful support and have been able to take our students everywhere we have asked them to be able to go. So last year, in the spring, from January to May, we had almost a hundred students visit local colleges, and those were during the day field trips. So they were like Butler, Marion, IU, Indy, still getting used to that, and local colleges here. We were able to send forty students on a three-day tour within Indiana. So on this extended tour, they were able to visit like Purdue and IU Bloomington and ISU, I think they may have gone to Evansville, but they are able to travel beyond that where we can't get to those campuses with our university, or within our window for field trips. And then, really excited that we were able to send, and when I say we were able to, we were able to cover the cost of the tour and that for all the students. We were able to send eighty students on two different tours to HBCUs last spring, during spring break. One tour was three days, one was five days. But again, allowing our students to be on campus and see and experience. We all know if you're visiting, you just can't really tell from a virtual visit or a college rep, you can get an idea, but you really, I have always believed, you really need to have your foot on the campus and see the students and see what it feels like. So to be able to send those eighty students outside the state and allow them to visit multiple schools on one trip was just fantastic. And so we have plans to continue that, we have doubled the budget for that, so I hope to send as many students that want to go on those trips, so. One other thing I didn't put up here, we have, we are sending a group of AP art students from the high school to the Chicago Institute of Art for them to be able to look at what does that art career look like, what does going to art and design school look like? And again, the grant is able to cover the cost of that larger bus to be able to go to Chicago and come back in the day and that, so. Just excited about all the opportunities we're be, we're able to provide. Couple other things, Center for Leadership Development, many of you know is an amazing program, but sometimes the events that they have in the evenings on the weekends are difficult for our students to be able to attend. So the grant has been able to fund the transportation and a staff member to go with students, so they are responsible to getting to Warren Central. There's twenty students that have been participating, we take them to the event, they come back, they get picked up at the high school, and we have ninety-six percent attendance rate for those students participating in that. We're going to continue that going forward next semester as well. We have student and family workshops, and the grant also pays for us to be able to provide translation and interpretation service at all of our college and career events. So, couple more things that we are looking forward to. So we are going to create a Journey of a Graduate Center within Warren Central. So this will be a designated space, a hub for all things post-secondary. So it will be a place where we facilitate all of our college visits, military reps, upward bound when they come in to meet with students, Ivy Tech when they're meeting with students about dual credit. All of those individuals that come in, we will have a central hub, it will have all the resources, it's where our College Access Navigator will operate out of. We're going to hi, be able to hire also a college advisor, so we'll have two staff members that will staff the Journey of a Graduate Center. We're going to have some extended hours so that we can provide programs and support for students in the evenings and families in the evenings, we'll have some weekend hours as well. So again, just another way that we can make sure we are providing as much support and information and access for our students and our families for whatever their post-secondary plans are. And then the other thing we're really excited about is our Journey of a Graduate Van, or our Jog Van. So, this is going to be our mobile Journey of a Graduate Center. So this will be a van that is modified to have Wi-Fi, Chromebooks, resources, and we're going to be able to take this van out into the community. It'll be at back-to-school events, we'll have it at athletic events, we'll reach out to business partners and faith-based organizations where we know our families are and be able to go to them. And so we're, we plan on providing Fast Food Workshop, college applications, even job applications, resume, anything that we can bring to our students and families in the community. It will be decorated and branded with Journey of a Graduate, you won't miss it, believe me, and you're going to see it around, and we're just so excited about that. So we have the van, working on the wrapping and working on the modifications. We are also able to buy a fifteen-passenger van, which we're going to decorate too, you'll see that around too. But the fifteen-passenger van is going to allow us to take small groups on college and industry tours. So with our fabulous transportation, we are limited from that nine-thirty to one-thirty window for field trips, right? So that doesn't always allow us to go very far. So with the fifteen-passenger van, we'll be able to leave earlier, we can, you know, have that full window of the school day, or even extend that if we make arrangements for students to get picked up. And then we can take students on, again, getting them to industries and college tours and opportunities, college and career fairs that take place in the city that we can take students to. So excited about both of those things, so those are in the works, you will see them when they're, they're out, believe me. Hiring that full-time college advisor, and then the last thing I want to highlight is the Warrior Launch Program. So this will be a early, the Prepare to Launch Program is going to be an early jumpstart for college applications for juniors, and then the Warrior Launch Program will be a summer program for students and families to bridge that transition from students that are graduating that are enrolled and planning to go to college, but how we can support them with making sure they've gotten their housing, their orientation scheduled, they've met with their advisor, all the different things that sometimes, especially our first-time college families, may need support in making sure that we go from graduation to being ready to be on campus in August as a freshman college student. So with that, I just want to say that I am very, very grateful for the opportunity to be here in this district and to be able to lead some of this work and work with such amazing counselors and educators and teachers. So just really proud of the progress that we've made in fostering college and career readiness in our district, and just know we are committed to providing our students those tools and resources and supports, so that every student, when they graduate, is going to be able to be successful in whatever aspiration dreams that they have, we're going to make sure they're ready. So, thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
First of all, I would like to say, I am so excited about all the things that you're doing. I was just listing college tours, college job fairs, college exploration, college fair leadership development, leadership development is, Center for Leadership Development is so awesome. Your central hub where you're going to have a college advisor, your mobile van, your launch and transition program, oh my gosh, I had to write it down, because those are so awesome. I can tell that you guys have been putting a lot of energy into it, and with all those different resources, it's going to really help our students. And I wanted to ask one question, in your, your college fairs, do you include the union job trades?
Yes.
Such as carpentry and things like that? Showing, because a lot of our students, they need to know how to get involved in those because they pay while they train them, and it's a great career.
Yes.
For those that are not going to college. They also give benefits.
Yeah, with the apprenticeship programs, yeah, they do.
Yes, they don't have to have any experience, all they have All they have to do is fill out the application and be able to be eligible, you know, and have an interest in doing that. And many of the trades are saying that they don't have enough students applying. So I was just gonna throw that in if we could try to put a little emphasis and let parents know and students know that those union jobs are out there. They have all the benefits, health benefits and everything, and they will pay them while they train. They don't have to have experience.
No, they can start. Usually, they just have to be 18 and they start earning money from day one with them and the benefits and that. But yes, we had several represented today at the high school, but they are always included in any of our college and career experiences and that. And that will be another thing, like in that Journey of a Graduate Center, we're gonna have information about all, especially about the apprenticeship programs and union programs that we have here in Indianapolis.
And I was told that the starting pay without experience is $23.50 per hour?
Yeah.
And then it only goes up from there. And this is a person starting out with no experience. So I think this is a hidden gem that we need to share with parents and the community because I'm pretty sure that there are people out there that can take advantage of that. And even students that have graduated, they can take advantage of that, you know, if they just knew about how to, you know, get in contact with these union jobs. So maybe you can put it out there that if you have any relatives and things that have graduated from Warren, we need to publicize how they can get in contact with these union jobs, you know, so that they can, you know, be successful in a career.
Absolutely. And they earn an associate's degree at the end of their training as well.
Yes.
So they have a two-year degree when they're done.
They will have a degree, yes.
Yeah, no, it's a great program. So yes, we will continue to promote and educate.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
Dr. Tierney. We'll be going over teaching and learning reports.
Yes. Good evening, President Triplet, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I bring to you tonight a report from the Teaching and Learning Team. We have been extremely busy and have hit the ground running since July, and I wanna give you an update on what we have been doing and what we're going to do moving forward. So as always, we start with your board goal. We always want to make sure that we provide the best supports and opportunities for all Warren students. We wanna make sure that they are ready for the four Es of post-secondary education, enlistment, employment, and entrepreneurship. The strategic plan area of focus is, of course, invest in the future of our graduates. So this is a document that was provided by the IDOE. It is streamlined to the iLearn checkpoints. It tells us every standard, when the checkpoint, when in the checkpoint is going to be assessed. So some of them are assessed in multiple checkpoints. Some of them are assessed only in one checkpoint. Some of them are on the summative assessment, the final big iLearn assessment. Some of them are not. They're just sample questions. So this basically is the roadmap for us to tell us what we're supposed to be teaching, what standards we're supposed to be doing, in which window, and when it will be assessed. If you look in the left-hand corner where it says indicator, you see those are highlighted in blue. That means they are hyperlinked to an item specification. I will talk about that in just a moment. But as you see, many of them are in blue. These began to be released in July after we had already started school. So we wanna, we're being, reacting to it in the midst of doing it at the same time, if that makes any sense. And so we really wanna make sure that we are reacting to whatever the IDOE is putting out because this year, they have provided more resources than they ever have. And we wanna make sure that we're on the forefront of whatever they're releasing, whatever resources are available to our educators. We wanna make sure that they're in front of them. They do no good sitting on a computer or sitting on my desk. And so making sure we're getting in front of teachers, we're getting in front of principals and providing that professional development so then it does trickle down to the classroom and to the students. Now you see all the blue on the left for third grade, but if you look at eighth grade, you see that there are not as many hyperlinks. So that's letting you know that it's a work in progress for them too. They're being released a little bit at a time, and we're checking almost daily to see what they, when, what they have released and so we can get it out to teachers. If you look at the left-hand column, you see that the only ones hyperlinked right now for eighth grade math is the ones that were assessed in checkpoint one. So checkpoint two, which we will be taking in December, is not even released yet. But we're still gonna use what we have, and we're gonna move forward. Now, going back to those blue hyperlinks that were on the left, this is a sample of an item specification that this is what the DOE is putting out for us. It is standards-based. And so I'll talk to you about some of the things we have done to be standards-based here in Warren as a reaction to the documents. But it breaks down each standard that is on the iLearn test. This is three RF1, which is Understanding the Six Major Syllable Patterns to Aid in Decoding Unknown Words. It tells you what reporting category it's going to be in. It's gonna be a reading foundations. This particular standard for third-grade students will be on checkpoint one, two, and three, and on the summative assessment. So that means it's a big standard, it's essential, and we gotta make sure we hit it all throughout the year. Linked there is also the instructional framework, which kind of builds up to the standard. One thing that the teachers have really been excited about is the content limits. What are the limitations on teaching this standard? It's nice to know these things upfront so we know how to prepare. Also, the clarifications. And you'll see later some comment, there's also common misconceptions, how students are getting caught up on these standards and what, so if we know it ahead of time and we see it, we know how to react to it because we have now prepared for it. Things like, they've added things like content-specific academic vocabulary. You know, sometimes we wanna teach the alligator or point to the smaller number instead of actually teaching the words, this is the less-than sign or this is the greater-than sign. So being very intentional about what vocabulary that we're using so when they see it on the test, it's not foreign to them. Even though they may know the concept, we've used different language. And so being streamlined across the district about the academic language that we are using. Also, on the standard-specific item specifications, they have also given us examples of proficiency levels. So this particular standard, it says, it gives us an example for below proficiency, approaching proficiency, and at proficiency. So basically, they've given us the target now, which we didn't ever have before. This target is telling us, okay, if the student is below proficiency, this is what the student can do. And so my next step would be, how do I get them to master the approaching proficiency? And then how do I get them to master the at proficiency? Not all standards, this one didn't in particular, but some of them have above proficiency as well. And they have an example for that as well. This particular standard didn't, and all of these have not been released yet, but we're reacting to them as they are released by the IDOE. So what has our response been? That's a lot of things that they've put out since July. So what changes has the Teaching and Learning Team made in reaction to the documents that the IDOE has put out? First, we immediately threw away our old Warren curriculum maps. We redid them. We wanted to, we know that iLearn is standard-focused. So we, as a district, need to become standard-focused. So if you look on the left, that is a sample of our old one. If you look on the right, is a sample of the new one. And as you see, the, on the new one, the standards are there, they're written out, they're hyperlinked, and they have some can-do statements that go along with them. On the other side, if you look on the left, we were heavily focused on our curricular resources, wonders. Not saying wonders is bad, but that's what we were focused on. We're teaching standards, not stories. And so we really wanted to make sure that we have the standard first. That's the first thing that we're gonna look at when we begin to plan and teach a lesson. Again, going curriculum, curricular resources agnostic. On the left, you have a copy of the old. On the right, you have a copy of the new. The fluency, launch, explore, reflect, and practice, we're all in Reveal Math. Now, we're still using Reveal Math, but we've vetted it. We've aligned it with standards, the Indiana, current Indiana State standards, instead of, we know the standards have changed since we have adopted Reveal. So doing that, our own alignment to make sure that we're on pace with what we need to take care of. We also created new standards resource guides. If you see that blue hyperlink at the top, that is the standard. Again, starting with the standard. That box is in gold at the top because we are going for the gold standard. That tells the teacher that that standard is essential. If it's in another box, that may not be a standard that's assessed on the iLearn. But if it's in a gold box, it catches your eye. You know that it's an essential standard. Again, we've aligned it to what checkpoint the standard is going to be assessed on. This example is a sixth-grade example, and it is gonna be assessed on checkpoint two and checkpoint, and the summative assessment. We also have been looking, going back to, because this is a practice we've done before, but looking at DOK levels. What level is the test at versus what level is our instruction at? And how do we scale our instruction up? Because some of the things they can do at a foundational level, a DOK one, but can they do it at a DOK three or DOK four? We've attached the learning outcome. You see evidence statements. Those can be turned into ICANN statements for the students. That content-specific vocabulary. We've compiled all of those things that the IDOE put into place into our own Warren documents as a guide. Looking back and looking ahead, that aligns the standard. So this is a sixth-grade standard. That would align the fifth-grade standard to the sixth-grade standard to the seventh-grade standard. So you can see what they're already coming with, what you should be giving them, and then what they're gonna get next year in regards to this same standard. If you look on the right, we have our Reveal Resources linked, but those Reveal Resources have been vetted. We wanna make sure that they are matching the DOK level. Just saying, go and reveal and do the lesson, we found out that it's not always a match. And so we went through the resource and made sure you're gonna do questions one through five in this one because they match the DOK level we're looking for. And so being more strategic because it's not about more work, it is about better work. We also have other resources that they can use. So say you run out of things to do in Reveal. We have other resources that were provided to us by the IDOE, some outsourced resources. And then we also linked it to iExcel, which is a program that they have access to that is state standards. And they also have iLearn checkpoint skill plans now that they are just releasing, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a few. I wanted to highlight this one because of the clarifications and misconceptions. That's what I was talking about earlier. Knowing where students could possibly get hung up. And if I see that happening in my classroom, I've already thought about it, I've already thought through it so I know how to get the student through it instead of, now, they're stuck, but I'm stuck on how to help them as the educator. And so being able to have those misconceptions already in my head so when I see them, I already have a plan for them to assist the student. We've been digging into lesson planning since August. Really being intentional. We have devised the Standard of Excellence in Lesson Planning Document. This document is what we expect teachers to do in a lesson plan. Looking at, is it tied to an Indiana academic standard? What's the instructional rigor? What's the DOK level? The learning objective, what's your target for today? Academic standard vocabulary. What words do we need to make sure the students know that they're gonna actually see on the test? That explicit teaching, how am I gonna teach the lesson? What steps am I gonna do? Is it a I do, we do, you do? What's the structure of the class? How are we making sure that what we want to convey academically is actually reaching the students? Thinking about our questioning. How do we use open-ended questioning to actually get the students thinking? A simple turn and talk will not do anymore. We need to have those questions that we're asking raise the rigor in the classroom. How are we gonna differentiate? We know we have various levels in our classrooms every day. How are we gonna make sure that we're meeting every student where they are? So actually thinking through those things and not trying to do them on the fly. What learning activities? Are they gonna work collaboratively in groups? Are they gonna do some individually and then pair with somebody? How are we gonna get them being collaborators in the classroom? What are they gonna do to apply the learning? I taught this lesson. How are they actually gonna put it into action, put it into use? And then, what am I gonna use to assess it? How do I know that they know? When they walk away from the classroom, how do I know that they got what they were supposed to get today? And if they don't, what am I gonna do about it to make sure they're ready for the next lesson? And then the lesson closure. So we took all of that and created a template. These templates vary a little bit, but those essential components, they could not change. So it has, some of them have school-specific logos. If there was something special to first or second grade that you all do every day that you wanted to plan for, you could add a box. But those ones that I just reviewed on the previous slide, you could not take those boxes away because those are the things we want you to plan for. So how do we teach all that? How did, how did the teachers get all of that? Well, we had some, we released the Standard of Excellence and Lesson Planning Document, we released it in August. That way, they could work through it, they could get out of their feelings about it a little bit if they had any feelings because we're moving their cheese in the middle of the school year, and we know how that is for teachers. I planned out my whole school year in the summer. Well, we can do that because we're reacting to what is happening around us. And so we wrote it out in August for September implementation date so they can kind of get comfortable with it, look it over, have their feelings about it, start to work through it so that by the time they came to the professional development on the eLearning Day in September, that was already out. And so we could have productive conversation and really move forward. The professional development for teachers on standard-based lesson planning happened on the September 3 eLearning Day. At that time, we did not have all the sample, the resource guides done because they were released after we already started school. So we got ready for checkpoint two and checkpoint one. So they knew they were coming. We kind of teased those out as well. So by the time we were ready to implement, you already had looked at them, seen them, worked through them, had conversation about them. That also gave them time for, to process That also gave them time for, to process and how to work through their implementation, have some conversation with their peers. September 23rd, after, right after the first I-Learn checkpoint is when we implemented both the, really implemented both the lesson planning and the Indiana State Standards Resource-Based Guides. So we've been doing that all of checkpoint two, which started October, no, September to, it'd be in December when we take checkpoint two. They're constantly getting feedback on their lesson plans by principals, either on a specific portion of it or looking at certain grade levels and providing feedback from their principals. And also, we're constantly getting and receiving and giving feedback on the standards-based resource guides. We took care of the teachers and how we take care of the principals as they are the instructional leaders in the building. Over fall break, we offered two sessions for principals to get some professional development around the lesson planning. What we did was we review each portion of the lesson planning because you are one person and you have one brain and you think a certain way. But when you get multiple minds in the room and people start putting their input and what this means to them and what this means to them, you know, you have some more continuity. You think about how we can make this streamlined across the district. So we not only went through each portion of the lesson plan document and talked about it, but then we created a lesson plan. And we had two different sessions where both groups ended up with a lesson plan and we talked through the documents. The action items from those professional developments were to now really streamline some standards-based lesson planning professional development in your building. Take one section at a time and really go through it, really hit it hard. Again, that's now 20-some, 30-some, sometimes 70-some minds in the room. Again, what the way I read it and interpret it may be a different way someone else reads it and interprets it. So we want to make sure that we go like this and we get it, we streamline it together. And it's not one person thinking it means this and another person thinking it means something else. So that's all we have done. But where are we going now? What are we doing now? So for checkpoint three, we're going to begin to track the progress of the standards prior to the checkpoints. So the data's not a surprise. How do we know what the data's going to be before the data gets here? And so being intentional about that. There were some documents also released by the IDOE that are already, the tracking documents were released by IDOE as well. So all they have to do is plug in their student names and the dropdowns are already there. Increased intentionality around standardized common formative assessments. Having some PD, they're like, but how do we, how do we track? We don't know what to track. So we're going to have some, we're going to create common assessments for checkpoint three to use across the district. So the plan for that is each school is going to take one ELA and one math standard at a grade level. And they're going to create a formative assessment using iXL, which is standards-based, and they are also going to use the I-Learn checkpoint skill plans that are also in iXL. We're going to share those with the coaches. The coaches are going to review them and vet them and then we'll push them out. So we do have a plan for how that's going to work. We also have ongoing instructional coaching cycles, getting into classrooms and providing teachers' feedback on their instruction, asking questions. Building leaders are continuing to provide feedback on lesson plans and best instructional practices. Now with all that going on, we still have ELA pilots going on. So we have two pilots going on. Amplify CKLA, which is in four elementary buildings, East Ridge, Grasssey Creek, Hawthorne, and Pleasant Run. And then there's a pilot in each intermediate middle school. There's also a DLI component to Amplify, which is called Camino's. And then we have ML Tier Two resources that come out of that as well. Now, on the other side, we have McGraw-Hill, Open Court, and Study Sync. That's in three elementary buildings at Low, Lakeside, and Sunny Heights. Any teacher in the IMS building, ELA teacher in the IMS building that is not currently doing a pilot is using the older version of Study Sync. So we already have Study Sync in our IMS buildings. So what have we been doing with that and where are we going with that? So in July, there's professional development for all piloting teachers and principals. In August, more professional development, but then we added in the OEL team. We want to make sure that our special education population are getting the best resources that we have available as well. Ongoing coaching cycles, going into those pilot classrooms and providing feedback. How is this, this product working for us? What does it look like in implementation with our students in our buildings? September and October, we had the publishers here. They did walkthroughs with us. They kind of gave us some feedback on what we're currently doing and how to improve. Feedback was provided to the teachers as well. Virtual coaching sessions have been provided by the vendors. And then curricular resource buildings are in all buildings. Because we want to make sure that even the piloting teachers know what's going on because all ELA teachers are going to have to use one of these. So how do we get it in front of them as well if they're not piloting? In November, we did a SIP and C, which Amplify was here. They walked through with cabinet members in OEL. We really looked at, how is it being implemented? How are our students responding? What student engagement? How are they reading? What are they reading? Do they see themselves in the curriculum? So really being intentional about what we're adopting and why we're adopting it. Also, teachers are continuing to preview those both programs so that we can make a good choice in later on. So in December, we have two vendor presentations coming up on December 2nd and December 9th. All ELA, ML, resource teachers are invited to attend because we want the input of everybody. And then they will, that week that the vendor presentation happens, we will begin to push out videos of the curriculum in action in our district because we really want those non-piloting teachers to see it before they decide to have a voice. And then after that, we will review what the data tells us. What does I-Learn checkpoints look like? What does NWA look like? Reviewing those data, reviewing that data, reviewing the teacher surveys, which one they like, which one bets fits our students. In January, we'll have literacy nights at all the buildings because we want parent input as well. So those kids will be out for parents to preview. They will, they'll have a survey to complete, just some checkboxes. Not a lot of writing because we know when they have to write, sometimes they don't want to do it. So we want to make sure it's clear and concise, but we do get parent input. And then in February, we hope to bring a recommendation for a curricular resource to you all, the school board. I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Dr. Anderson, I like the focus and looking at the two programs for the reading. What about the math? Are we looking at changing our math curriculum?
Not at this time. We are in a, we're in a three-year adoption, three of the six-year adoption cycle. So not at this time. But we are looking at other resources that we can add to so that we're scaffolding up.
I just want to say, I think that you're really covering a lot of things and doing great. And I like the idea that you are aligning instruction with the academic standards. I think that that is very, very important. You know, I didn't think about that until you started talking. And then I started thinking how important that is. Yes, and we had a speaker to come this past summer and was talking about how the students really progress because the teachers use the standards and they taught by the standards. And that's what made their school improve. So I think that we're on the right track of doing that. So good job.
Thank you.
Tierney, how did we do on the first checkpoint?
The checkpoint, the data wasn't as useful until they just put out some more documents. And so it kind of told us whether some students were on grade level, I mean, well, below, approaching, at, but it didn't give us any specifics. And so they have released some more documents, like the performance indicators that kind of outlines what that, what that means. And so we just got that document this week. So now we're going back to checkpoint one and really looking at that data in a different way. I did that with IMS buildings last night. And so we're going back and looking at it because we didn't have all the information that we have now.
When you get that all dissected, would you be able to just give us an update?
Absolutely.
So we can kind of know how the checkpoints are going?
Absolutely.
Thank you that you gave us a lot of information to process and look over. We do appreciate cabinet, the staff, and all of the building leads for taking the directive and hitting the ground running. We know change is not always accepted and it's not easy and ouch, you know, but we thank you that the toes are a little better now. And the transition of just feeding it to them a little at a time. So thank you for that. Honoring, you know, the directive of the board, feeding you all from the community's best interest, but also cultivating it in a way that is receptive for our teachers. So I appreciate that. I saw that in the presentation. It was kind of skillful in how you were using your words. So thank you for that. So no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the hot seat. I'll put my glasses on, I'm getting older. Business of citizens present.
We have no yellow cards.
Thank you. Action item, Brian.
Good evening, President Triplet, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. I have before you two action items for your consideration that are related to compensation, proposed compensation increases for various staff. The first one up is for a proposed compensation increase for your consideration regarding a compensation increase for classified staff. That includes all hourly support staff as well as salaried, non-certified staff. And that involves a 2.5% across-the-board raise as well as maintaining our $350 loyalty bonus for those supports, full-time support staff with 20 or more consecutive years of full-time employment.
So moved. I will entertain, I will entertain the motion.
I will second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Julie and seconded by Terry. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, oh, sorry. Brian, can we go over real quick? Kind of how the step that our, that our classified staff already gets, how that works, and then why the percentage isn't necessarily as high as you may see in other districts?
Sure. You're referring to our various support staff salary schedules for hourly staff.
Yes.
And so every July, so our contract year is July 1 to June 30th. And so every July, there is an automatic step up. All support staff that are hourly are rolled to the next step, the next appropriate step on the salary schedule. The average step up when that roll happens is roughly about 2%. So that's kind of an automatic 2% increase in compensation in the hourly rate automatically. So this is another 2.5% and we will adjust all the steps accordingly as well.
And so it's cumulative?
So it's cumulative, yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
We are ready to vote. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Your next item?
The next action item for your consideration is a proposed compensation increase for administrators. And so that is involving a 1087 per contract day for all administrators. And it's, the proposed increase matches the per-day rate previously approved for teachers. So there's a couple of examples on the action item memorandum. So for example, we're taking, that 1087 per day rate is based on a standard 184-day teacher contract. So you take the teacher raise, divide that by 184, that's the daily rate of 1087. So for instance, if you take our K-8 assistant principals who work a 200-day contract, 200 days is 16 more than a standard 184-day teacher contract. So 1087 times 16 is a lump sum. That's added and it's a $2,174 raise for those K-8 APs that work 200 days or any administrator that works 200 days. So just a couple of examples right there. Of course, this is all, all the raises, I should have mentioned, for support staff as well as admin are retroactive to July 1, similar to the teacher compensation increase.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
It's been properly moved by Julie and seconded by Rachel. Is there any discussion on the action items? If not, we are ready to vote. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Next, oh. Next on our agenda is 13.0 discussion item. 13.01 is honoring Larry Willen? Willen? Thank you for that correction on that pronunciation. And Marcus.
Thank you, President Triplet, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. Tonight for discussion, I have a very unique ask of our board and that's to honor the late, who we refer to as Larry the Legend Willen. We have quite a few Warren Central graduates here with us this evening as well as some longtime employees. And when you say the name Larry Willen here on the far east side, it means something special. So for those of you that aren't as familiar with Coach Willen, I'd like to introduce not only his lasting legacy, but a special piece that we did several years ago to celebrate his life.
It's just another Friday night here on the east side. But this just isn't a normal Friday night. This is the first time in 54 years that the greatest warrior of them all, the legend Larry Willen, is not here with us. Ex-Keed playing hard to be there for each other, just like he was for 53 years. He served and now it's our time to give back and go make him proud. You go do exactly what he wants you to do. You see a lot of smiles. You see a lot of tears. You see a lot of black and gold. But the one thing you see, you see a lot of Larry Willen. Because he left a piece of him in all of us. Because his legacy will live with all of us forever.
It means that someplace along the line, I struck a chord with them and they respected me.
Those bumblebee stripes that you made so famous, that brought home nine state championships, we wear proudly. And we will carry those stripes with us every time we play at Lucas Oil. But we will always remember those things you value the most. Honor, respect, faith, and that warrior pride. Larry, when we asked you, how would you like to be remembered? You told us.
Just a good guy. Somebody who had principles, who believed in God and was fair. And if you think of me as that, that's good.
President Triplet, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, as we continue to celebrate the legacy, legacy of Coach Larry Willen, it is fitting that we honor him by naming our new football locker room and our game field at Warrior Stadium after Coach Willen for the profound impact that he made on our school, on our community and here on the far east side. He served Warren Township for well over 50 years. As a coach, as a business teacher, which I know some of you had Coach Willen as a business teacher, as a track coach, and he has the unique legacy. He was a member of all nine of our football state championships and all four of our boys' track state championships. But as we always talk about, medals and rings fade, but impact lasts forever. When Coach Willen passed back in 2019, at that time, I was working in the athletic department and we put several posts up to commemorate his life. And those were by far, those posts received the most activity in the history of any post that we put up during that time. And it was alumni, it was students, it was family members that were thankful for the time that he had here. Both of his kids graduated from Warren Central High School. He lived in Warren Township until the day that, that we lost him back in 2019. The rationale for naming the stadium as well as our game field after Coach Willen comes down to three things. The celebration of excellence. Many of the things that I just mentioned will help his legacy live forever, not just with our athletes, but also our students. The community connection. Coach Willen is synonymous with the far east side. He's synonymous with Warren Township. By naming the facilities after him, we honor his connection. He has built with students across multiple disciplines, reinforcing the idea that education and athletics go hand in hand. And then finally, number three, pride of the east side. The designation of these facilities will ensure that Coach Willen and Warren's legacy is preserved forever. is preserved forever. It will provide a place for future athletes and students to remember and celebrate his contribution, contributions, fostering a sense of East Side pride and Warren Central community. I appreciate your consideration.
Wow, thank you. I think if we could, it would be voting on the night, so. All right, Terry, I'll let you follow that in closing.
It's hard to follow. Had the opportunity to meet him several times, and loved his bumblebee shirt, and he just was a hero for all of our kids, so we appreciate him. Wanted to just say thank you for all the reports. Stony Brook loved the drum line, and just amazing. They can probably go very far in their lives with that, as well as a career. But I'm just really glad to see the momentum that we're doing, really picking up the rigor for our students. Appreciate our teachers being flexible, and just that the grace has been shared with them of a timeline to do things. Change is very hard, but with change there is always good progress as the outcome. As we go into Thanksgiving, just remember your family, and remember your loved ones, and the elderly, hold them tight, and take time to really embrace, and to cherish, and create new memories.
Mr. Howard?
I just want to say that, you know, I had a, I had an opportunity to go to the, see the Cinderella play, and I, I thought that was outstanding. Those kids were, were great. You could tell they put a lot of, a lot of work into it, a lot of talent, a great deal of talent. And I was, me and my wife, we were very impressed at the performance, and it was, it was truly great. The counseling program that was presented, you know, I, I had no idea. I'll admit that. They do a tremendous amount, you ought to be proud of your counseling program, no question about it. You do a tremendous amount of work. I'm sure the students appreciate it. You're not only counseling students, but you're actually acting as their mentors. And I know when they leave here, they, they never forget you, because you give them so much, and it's just a second to none. I don't think there's anybody that, any, any group, any counseling group that does what you guys do for our students. And I was truly, truly impressed by what I saw, so, you know, bravo, bravo. I, I want to say something too about the board. You know, you, we, we just got through an election, and, you know, there's a lot of great continuity now that we've got, everybody came back, and we did a lot of learning that first four years. I, I think, I, I just feel so good about every member on the board right now. Reflecting on, on what, what we've gone through in the last four years, and I hope we've, we've done good stewardship for you guys. I hope you appreciate the support we gave you, because we truly support. Appreciate your efforts in keeping this district together, and working really hard, so. I mean, you just can't, you just can't say enough about the teachers, the principals, and our administration. And hats off to Dr. Hanson in putting together a great team, and providing the kind of leadership that, that really exudes greatness, so. I don't know what else I can say about that. I'm very proud of everybody that's part of this, this, this great district. Thanksgiving's coming up, and we're going to be out there enjoying a lot of things. I'm going to enjoy kicking back, because my wife and my daughters will do all the cooking, so I'm going to watch a lot of football and, and chill out. And I, I hope you do the same. Be very safe out there. Just got to stay alert, and take care of yourself. Thank you.
Rachel?
First and foremost, I do want to congratulate LaShawna, Howard, Gloria, and Julie for being reelected. Congratulations to all of you. I'm looking forward to working with you again, continuing. I think that, that'll lead us. Change can be good, but no change can also mean that what you've got going, you can keep going, and we can build and become better. And so, I'm just really, really happy with the outcome and the fact that we will all continue to work together to build and bring great things to Warren Township. With the rest of the board, I attended CUBE. I injured myself right before we left pretty seriously, and so I want to thank everyone, in particular Julie, for taking care of me while I could not walk in Las Vegas. So, we learned a lot of really great things, and we talked to a lot of really great people. CUBE is, I think, it's the Council of Urban Boards Education Conference, and I think it is an incredibly valuable conference where we get to discuss not just kind of day-in, day-out activities, but also really look at policies, and really look at equity issues, and make sure that we are doing what is best and following best practices, and learning more about those practices for the students that we have, so that they can achieve all of the things that they want to do in their lives. And obviously, our counseling department and our academic department tie into that really, really well. And so, it was just, it's always a really, really good experience. I also want to say that Gloria and I went to the IPSS mock interviews last week, where we got to interview some up-and-coming people who just got their licenses to become superintendents. And with those things, it's always very interesting, because you become very grateful for what you have, right? Which is always nice, like, you're like, oh, okay, no, we're, we're good with what we've got, and, but it was, it was a really, really great day. Plus, it's always good talking to other people and kind of getting an idea. One of the candidates that I interviewed had only ever worked in rural school settings, and I realized I had like zero questions to ask, like built into my brains. That was a, a stretch, and making sure that you're able to do those. And then, to ditto some of what Howard said, Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday. I love it the most. And so, make sure that you are able to take that time, spend time with your family, forget we exist, there's, there's five days solid, so do that. Kick back, relax, and enjoy yourselves.
Julie?
I will have to say, it's not often that I get to ride in as Rachel's hero on an electric scooter. Okay. Just to let you know, the legislative season has officially begun yesterday, with the swearing in of new members in the General Assembly. And today, there was a tax, a state and local tax review task force meeting. There are no bills out there yet, at least not on the books, but they will start rolling in, and I will let you know what I find out as we go. This is the budget year, so it's a long session, and they have to have all their bills in by mid-January, and then we'll kick it off. I do want to say, they're talking about less, you know, concern about us having enough money in our budget. December is when they will give us the forecast, so we will know a little bit more then. But I just want to say that the purpose of pub, I saw this written out somewhere. "The purpose of public education in a public school is to teach kids what society needs them to know. The client of the public school is the entire community, the public." Okay? So, vouchers will probably come up, but there's not a lot more damage they can do to us by making them universal. But what we need to remember is that, at least I think, guys can let me know what you think, accountability should be the same. So, what public, what Hoops Public Schools have to jump through is what Hoops Charter should have to jump through, is what Hoops Private Schools should have to jump through if they're taking public money. Okay? I was going to, I'm not a very good artist. If I was, I would have made nice, big hoops at different levels, showing the nice tall jump that the public schools have to make versus the, the little ones that the private schools have to make. And you can tell that by when you read a bill. It'll say, "Public Schools," or it'll say, "Public Charter," or it'll say, "Public Charter" and "Non-Public Schools." But most of the time, it's public schools, so. Huh? Yes, yes, yes. So, just get yourself excited for this upcoming season. It's like sports. Butt-awful, yes. Okay. You guys, when you leave here next Wednesday, do they have Wednesday off?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday. Go home, enjoy yourself, and hug your family. Because you need to do that, so. I'm done.
Come on, Coach.
Well, I would like to echo everything they would said previously, so I won't repeat that. But this was a very, as they all are, very relevant display of who we are. In this one board meeting today, we started with a celebration of our youth. Dr. Anderson showed us where we are and where we're going, and then we got to honor one of our greatest. And that in itself is what Warren Township is about, you know? We're here for the future, our kids, and we will always remember each other and the work that we put in. Because this is a, this is a game of passion and a family of passion. Our motivation is the children that we're here to serve, and the public we serve, so that's what, that's what we are for, and that's what keeps us strong, keeps us going, and keeps us together, so. Thank you.
Ms. Gloria?
I guess they saved me for last. First of all, I would like to say Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thanksgiving is a time for us to really think about how, how we should be thankful. This coming weekend, I, a group of us, we will be serving the homeless veterans and some of the homeless that's on the street. And we have 75 homeless veterans that we'll be serving. And so, you know, when you look around, you know, regardless of what we don't have, we can still be thankful. So, Thanksgiving is always a time that I think about how thankful I am, because no matter how bad things are, it could be worse. So, I'm just asking everybody to just think about that. I did go see the Cinderella play, and those students, they had some great voices. They were like professional. So, it was really, really a great play. I would like to thank all of you for your vote. I look forward to serving you for another four years. And as it has been said, all of us, we work very well together, and we were allowed to all get back on the board again to serve you, and hopefully, you are pleased with what we're doing and what we're going to do. We look forward to a great future together. I also would like to say that there are great things happening here in Warren. We can be proud of our school district. When the counselors gave their report, it was awesome. Stony Brook's students were awesome. Our student rep, oh my gosh, she is so awesome. I tell you, every time she speak, you know, she is a product of Warren. And you know what? Look what we're developing here, so we can be so proud. Let's give her another hand. She is so awesome. Yeah, I want to say I love Warren. And you know what? I have been associated with Warren for now 40 years. I was thinking about that, because my children, I was a parent, and my children, all three children are products of Warren and graduated from Warren. So, I have been a product of Warren for 40 years, raising my kids in Warren. So, you know, I'm delicate, dedicated to Warren, and I really love Warren, and I'm just excited about all the things that we're doing and what we're going to do. So, I just want to say again, good night, and thank you all for coming.
I just want to add something real quick. When Gloria mentioned going to Cinderella and several other people, if you were there on Sunday, Sunday, that was the last day for it, right? Saturday, and you heard a baby being nice and loud in the back, and I had to take her out several times, that was my granddaughter loving the acoustics of the PAC Center.
Well, you have heard everything from our board, and again, I think all of us are very grateful to have received the votes to come back and serve another term. One thing I would say, I know that we have asked a lot of you, but trust us, we asked a lot of each other as well. So, as we're asking you to work and have accountability for our scholars that you're overseeing and have direct contact with daily, we are keeping ourselves accountable to our community who elected us to do that job. I love it that we're able to work together and how we support each other. Do we always agree? Absolutely not. But that is what makes us a great board. But we all have one common goal, and that is to see Warren be the best district in the state of Indiana. So, as long as we keep that focus, we will continue to go higher. Enjoy your Thanksgiving. I love giving, I love servitude. Again, if anyone is in need, staff, if anyone is in need, no shamefulness, no embarrassment, please, please, please reach out to your building leads, Dr. Hanson, Laura, anyone at MCRC. It could be a private exchange. We just want to make sure that our community is fed. Our goal is to pass out 500 baskets into our community on Wednesday with 500 turkeys. So, please, if you want to come out and help support and volunteer with our families, we are here, we will be at MCRC, or if you are in need, please let us know. We have to take care of our own. Enjoy your families, hug someone, and let's continue to decrease the crime in, on the East Side, and improve our mental health, and just love each other. It's going to take all of that for us to be successful. Have a good night. Be safe, I guess the snow is coming? I didn't know, so be careful. We won't have school closing tomorrow? Oh, shoot. I tried. I tried. So, meeting is adjourned.